Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. I'd like to ask for a moment, please stand for pledge.
The pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, under the age of justice.
Okay, well, the call is meeting to order. I'd like to thank the county officials for inviting us here and allowing us to use their facility. Board Supervisor Chairwoman and all the other supervisors, County Secretary, County Solicitor. I entertain a motion to approve a meeting of the minutes of the last meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Another question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, thank you. Opportunity for the public to address the board agenda items only.
Do I need to read this?
Okay, nothing, thank you. Proclamation two-two-zero-one-one.
Oh, gosh. Hang on a minute, gotta get my readers.
It's a proclamation presentation for the National Library Week.
Okay.
So, ma'am.
Go now, ready? Okay. Whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that foster a sense of connection and build community for all residents of Lackawanna County by connection, by connecting people to technology, providing access to broadband internet, computers, and training that are critical for accessing education and employment opportunities. And whereas libraries offer opportunities for everyone to connect with new ideas and become their best selves through access to multimedia content, programs, and classes in addition to books. Today's libraries and their services extend far beyond the four walls of a building and everyone is welcome to use their resources. Whereas in times of crisis, libraries and library professionals play an invaluable role in supporting their communities, both in personal, in person and virtually. Libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are as diverse as the populations they serve and ensure equity of access for all. Whereas libraries are expanding their resources to adapt to our changing world while continuing to meet the needs of their patrons and remain a long and trusted institution promoting the free, somewhere kind of stuff there. I think we're missing a word. I'm assuming it's supposed to be promoting the free access to information, but we will have to amend this. We, Debbie Dominic, Jerry Natariani, and Chris Shermack, Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, do hereby recognize and proclaim April 3rd through April 9th, 2022, to be National Library Week in Lackawanna County.
Commissioners here to speak upon that is the Director of the Board. This is very good.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, thank you.
Thank you so much for that lovely proclamation and for recognizing National Library Week here in Lackawanna County. And thank you always for your continuing support. We do appreciate that. We have a number of representatives of our libraries here with us today, and they're all hiding out in the hallway out there. Hello.
Come on in.
Come on in for a second. So, "Connect with Your Library" is the theme for National Library Week. Over the past two years, as we've worked through the pandemic, people have struggled to connect with one another and with the places that they frequented throughout their lives. Our Lackawanna County libraries have helped keep our residents in touch by adapting our services to meet them in their comfort zones, whether that's in person or virtual. For example, library patrons can borrow books in the library, as they always have. They can also download eBooks and audiobooks from our website. And people who can't get to our buildings or who don't have access to a computer at home are able to get their books by curbside pickup or by home delivery, which is a wonderful thing. So, books are still the mainstay of our business, but people also come to the library to use our computers and our broadband network. Our connections to databases provide homework support for students, assist entrepreneurs with researching business opportunities, and help job seekers identify and apply for positions. Our libraries also offer a lot of programs to keep people of all ages connected and informed. I think most people here know that storytimes are really valuable for helping toddlers and preschoolers learn about the joys of books and reading. But a lot of people don't realize how many other programs are available at our libraries. I took a look at the April calendar of events for our libraries, and I found programs on Shakespeare and Benjamin Franklin, classes in the art of Pisanqui, which is the ornate Ukrainian Easter eggs, discussions on cryptocurrency, instruction in coding, craft circles, and book discussions. So, libraries are places where our communities can connect, but most importantly, libraries connect us to each other. And residents of Lackawanna County can have access to all of our services for free with a library card. And to get a library card, you just stop in at any library, or you can go to our website and register online. So, thank you again for helping us to celebrate National Library Week.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
My assistant, Shannon, she's a very avid supporter of the library. She comes to work and reads on her lunch. She always has a book from the library. And I said to her, "Please don't be mad that I saw this," but I said, "Why don't you buy them?" And she said, "There's nothing like a book from the library," like the smell of them and just going there, and I get it.
Saves a lot of money, too.
And I should probably, you talked about crypto encoding. Like, I hear that everywhere on TV, and I have no idea what it means, so maybe I should stop in and visit.
Oh, the library.
But if we want to present this, the only thing I ask is that maybe we, there is one word, like there's something missing, so we'll get you, we'll give you this one now, but then we'll get you a new modified one later on today, if that's okay with you.
Perfect. Okay, thank you so much.
Commissioner, you're gonna take a picture with the library. I'm coming. All right. Are you slow?
Is everybody in at once, could be in?
Not yet.
Not yet? Please, I need just to move over, a couple over here next to me. Attorney General, I have to move in a little.
Can you get up and shoot down some?
I need just to move in a little. Everybody to move in. All right, ready? Everybody looking at me? You're gonna take a couple? That's very nice, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Five more proclamations?
Yeah.
More pictures? This is my paddle mouth.
I'm on the library, Scranton colored library.
Absolutely. Isn't Brian involved? Brian, right? Isn't Brian, yeah, yeah. Been on a while, right?
Okay. Okay, thank you. Next is the ordinance. It's the second reading of two-two-zero-zero-nine-two. Yes, Commissioners, this is the second reading of ordinance two-seven-seven. When it's completed, you will take a vote on this. I'm sure the Solicitors can throw you in on anything. We also have Attorney Chris Lansky and Mr. Ben here, if you have any additional questions as opposed to the last time that we met. In ordinance to the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, approving an interest rate management plan, approving the form of an amendment to an existing interest rate management agreement relating to the 2017 bonds, whereas the county has here before issued its $58,490,000 original aggregate principal amount general obligation bond series 2017, whereas the county and PNC Bank National Association have entered into a qualified interest rate management agreement with respect to the 2017 bonds. Whereas the county has caused an interest rate management plan to be prepared by the financial advisor, in furtherance of the interest rate management plan, the county intends to amend, modify, and/or supplement the original interest rate swap agreement, which in the judgment of the county is designed to manage interest rate risk or interest cost of the county of the 2017 bonds and will assist the county in managing the interest rate risk or interest cost of the county. Now therefore, being enacted and or ordained by the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna in accordance with the purposes and objectives of the Act, the county hereby adopts and approves the interest rate management plan prepared and recommended by the financial advisor attached here to its appendix one, subject to such modifications from time to time as the Chairman or Vice Chairman of the Board, the county's financial advisor, and counsel to the county shall approve. In order, manage interest costs of the county related to the 2017 bonds, the authorized officers of the county as set forth in section C below are hereby authorized to execute and deliver the 2022 interest rate swap agreement, the substantial form of which is attached here to as appendix two. The 2022 interest rate swap agreement shall obligate the county to pay the amount equal to 100% of USD SIF MA Municipal Swap Index plus the fixed spread. The 2022 interest rate swap agreement shall obligate the counterparty to pay a percentage to be determined by the financial advisor to be fair and reasonable at the time of final pricing of the 2022 index rate swap agreement of the Secured Overnight Financing Rate Index plus a fixed spread. The Chairman or Vice President of the Board, Chairman or Vice Chairman of the Board is hereby authorized to execute the 2022 interest rate swap agreement by manual or facsimile of signature. The Chief of Staff or the Assistant Chief of Staff of the county is hereby authorized to attest by manual or facsimile signature to affix a seal of the county on the 2022 interest rate swap agreement. The 2022 interest rate swap agreement will be a general obligation of the county. The county hereby covenants that it shall include the amount of periodic scheduled payment therunder for each fiscal year in which sums are payable in its budget for that year. In compliance with the section eight-two-eight-one E of the Act, the members of the Board, in consultation with the financial advisor to the county, have determined that negotiation rather than a public sale is in the best in financial interest of the county. The 2022 interest rate swap agreement and other documents are presented are presently expected to be dated as of the date of execution, any time after the following proceedings with the Department of Community and Economic Development. The county hereby appoints and engages Stevens and Lee PC to act as special swap counsel to the county, hereby reappoints FSL Public Finance LLC to act as the financial advisor to the county in connection with the execution and delivery of the 2022 interest rate swap agreement and to facilitate the intent of this ordinance. All such expenses incurred in connection with transactions contemplated by this ordinance shall be paid solely out of the funds paid by the counterparty to the county as a one-time fee pursuant to the provisions of the 2022 interest rate swap agreement. The official, officers and officials of the county are hereby authorized and directed to execute and deliver such other documents to take such other action as may be necessary or appropriate in order to effectuate the execution and delivery of the 2022 interest rate swap agreement, in all in accordance with this ordinance. Duly enacted and ordained the sixth day of April, 2022, by the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, in lawful session duly assembled. Mr. Chairman. Well, this is the second reading, and that therefore requires a vote. But we do have Mr. Kazlowski and Mr. Ben here to explain a little bit so that people understand. It's nothing, it's actually all good, yeah, you guys.
Maybe like in more of a layman's terms.
Sure, yeah. And all this is an amendment. This long-winded ordinance is required by state law, too. Basically, all we're doing is amending the current interest rate management agreement that was originally back, I think, in 2004, 2006. And the only reason we have to do this is because one of the indices in that interest rate management agreement is tied to the LIBOR rate. LIBOR is going away, no fault of the county, is being replaced by the SOFR rate, which is the Secured Overnight Financing Index. Under state law, we have to come to the county to effectuate that amendment and have a public vote and then refile with the state. It is going to be cash flow neutral, is designed to be cash flow neutral to the county. So, again, this is more of a, we need to do this because one of the indices is going away, and we need to replace it with one of those, with a new indices that is going to take over for that. And that's really all that long-winded ordinance does.
Thank you.
No problem.
You're right.
Yes, well, yeah.
Okay, on that, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, we're gonna end the phone on a border. Mr. Brown has to go to a function. That would be resolution two-two-zero-one-zero-eight. That is correct. Accepting the proposals for Communication Systems Integrators, be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve and accept the co-stars of proposals for Communication Systems Integrators LLC, CSI, for the Lackawanna County Prison COVID-19 Camera Project and Video Subordinates Upgrade, adopted the regular meaning of Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on April 6, 2022. Mr. Chairman here to speak upon that is our IT Director, Mr. Mike Brown.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
So, in this proposal is just to go through and get payables done for the service that will be completed by CSI and their new name Keystone Fire. So, this will allow not only secure cameras, remote viewing, and data extraction when necessary for any type of cases that come up with an extended period of time for storage. So, we actually have storage within the prison and also in our data center at the LCGC.
Anyone have any questions for Mike? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Other question? All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, resolution two-two-zero-one-one-two. It's pending current payables. Be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approved the filing payables, Lackawanna County's general fund numbers, three-three-eight-zero-seventy dash three-three-nine-one-seventy-five, totaling $19,114,342.25. Electric fund transfers, including all payroll accounts totaling $11,218,162.54. Adopted and regularly made, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on April 6, 2022. Mr. Commissioner, Mr. Chairman. Anyone have any questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Resolution two-two-zero-zero-nine-three. Entering an agreement with Reynolds Business Systems, be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the agreement with Reynolds Business Systems for the Recorder Deeds Office for PDF, a permanent storage of county records project to be paid for out of the Recorder Deeds Record Improvement Fund, a cost of $81,598.88. Adopted and regularly made, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on April 6, 2022. Mr. Chairman here to speak upon that is our Recorder of Deeds, Ms. Erin Profaco McNulty.
Thank you, Commissioners. I think during the work session, I went into detail on what it is, and we have eight million pages of documents that need to be preserved to meet the Pennsylvania Historical Museum Commission standards. Rather than doing the cumbersome process of creating microfilm, storing it at one of the salt mines in Pittsburgh, and then...
Which is the only way of doing it.
The only way to do it, right. And then to do it over again every 10 years, you have to check the film and do it over. So, now what's gonna happen is they'll store it into a PDF file, and it'll be, of course, if Mike was here, I'm sure, a small server file. One copy will be in the government center, the other one for storage of the 911, so that there's two side pieces for each one of it. This is also, they'll do the, it's the eight million images, and then they'll also, if the software changes, the PDFA software changes to another standard in several years, it always does, they will recreate them so that those images are current and that's meeting the law.
And this is money already accumulated?
This is, we collect $5 on every document, that's $3 on every document that's recorded. And in the county, $2 goes to the County Improvement Fund, $3 stays with us. We have the money, we've been saving the money for this. Yeah, so it's, nothing.
You've done a great job.
Ah, I love it. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. McNulty? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Other question? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Okay, resolution two-two-zero-zero-nine-four. This is certifying the match state funds for the County of Lackawanna Transit System, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby certified, that will provide the County of Lackawanna Transit System local funds in the amount of $878,729 to match state funds provided pursuant to 74 PACS Section 15, 13 of the fiscal year 2022 through 2023. Further, the Board of Commissioners resolves and certifies that the required amount of local matching funds will be provided no later than the end of the state fiscal year June 30, 2023. Adopted and regularly made, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on April 6, 2022. Mr. Chairman, this is our annual match that we give to the Colts. Here to speak upon that or have any comments for him is the Executive Director of Colts, Timothy McGrath, and CFO of Colts, Mr. Michael Dantcher.
Good morning, everybody. More than you're dragging us. Thank you for the resolution. Thank you for the resolution, Mr. Jeffers, Rachel Helacun, Lee, and Excavement Lee. We are here on behalf of the County of Lackawanna Transit System, respectfully requesting matching funds, our annual matching funds, as required per Act 89 of the Pennsylvania State Transit Code, that will enable us to also obtain our state funding. So, with that said, are there any questions for us?
Anyone, any questions?
Nope.
No, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Other question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, resolution two-two-zero-zero-nine-five. Establishing the municipal electronic recycling collection event grant program. Be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby establish Lackawanna County Municipal Electronic Recycling Collection Event Grant Program to reimburse municipalities within Lackawanna County for holding an electronic recycling collection event for their residents. Adopted and regularly made, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on April 6, 2022. Mr. Chairman here to speak upon that is our Environmental Sustainability and Recycling Director, Mr. Cole Shapiro.
Good morning, everybody. So, the Lackawanna County Municipal Electronic Recycling Collection Event Grant is created to reimburse the municipalities of Lackawanna County for having a recycling, like electronic recycling collection. Wow, that's a mountain. So, we, you guys all know there's a huge need for more of these events to be held. And rather than having one large event every year, every other year, it's a lot safer and cost-effective for it to be broken up by municipalities.
It's easy for the citizens, though, everything.
Yes, everybody could, you know, get a turn. So, this grant will reimburse about 60 municipalities up to $1,000 for vendor costs. It is a first-come, first-served grant, and I will be emailing it to everybody at the same time following this meeting.
Chairman, Director Shapiro's idea behind this is to do this continuously every year so that all the municipalities get a piece of this at some point. When they did the first one, it was, the highway was blocked off. I believe it was after Viewmont. So, we're gonna do it once. Okay, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Other question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. All right, resolution two-two-zero-zero-nine-six. Ratifying a parking agreement with Montage. Be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby ratify the parking license agreement with Montage Mountain Resorts and Lackawanna County Performing Arts Center Authority for 2,332 passenger vehicle parking spaces located at the Montage Mountain Resort, 1,000 Montage Mountain Road, Scranton, Pennsylvania, term to commence immediately and expire December 31, 2022. Adopted and regularly made, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on April 6, 2022. Mr. Chairman here to speak upon that is our Solicitor, Mr. Frank Rosario.
Thank you, Chief Jeffers. Good morning, Commissioners. This is, there's actually two resolutions on today. This is the first of two separate parking agreements that we've entered into in conjunction with our contract with Live Nation to ensure appropriate and sufficient parking up on the mountain during the concert season. We're required to provide 6,000 parking spaces, so this agreement, along with the next agreement, collectively, along with our existing lots, satisfy that requirement under the contract. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
No, no question.
I'm sorry.
It's zero.
Oh, yeah, there is no cost. There is zero cost for us to use these parking spots, along with the additional agreement that I'll talk about as well. So, thank you, thanks for...
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Other question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Resolution two-two-zero-zero-nine-seven. Ratifying a parking agreement with Davis Eight-One Eight-One LLC. Be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby ratify the parking license agreement with Davis Eight-One LLC, term to commence immediately and expire on December 31, 2022. Adopted and regularly made, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on April 6, 2022. Mr. Chairman, once again, Attorney for Rosario.
Thank you again, Mr. Jeffers. As indicated, this is the second agreement that will comprise the total obligation that we have to provide the required spots. This agreement as well is at a zero cost to the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Undertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Other question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, resolution two-two-zero-zero-nine-eight. Entering into agreement with Professional Investigative Services, be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve and enter into an agreement for professional investigative services with James Salima of JS Investigation and Consultant on behalf of Lackawanna County Prison Board, to cost $75 per hour plus mileage. Adopted and regularly made, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on April 6, 2022. Mr. Chairman, once again, here is Attorney Rosario.
Thank you again, Mr. Jeffers. This is an agreement that is born out of the resolution by the Lackawanna County Prison Board. As indicated, it's a professional services agreement, there are no retainers included, and it's going to be billed at the rate of $75 an hour plus mileage, and I believe the mileage cost is at standard 55 cents. If there's any specific questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
Anyone have any questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Other question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Resolution two-two-zero-zero-nine-nine. Amending a professional services contract with Environmental Planning and Design LLC, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby amend Resolution twenty-two-dash-zero-zero-zero-six, adopted January 5, 2022, awarding the project consultant to for recreation needs and parks assessment. And be it resolved, this amendment to the professional services agreement authorizes the Board of Commissioners to enter into additional services for the stage-two scope of work related to the McDay Park Improvement Project, which includes, but not limited to, detailed design permitting, construction, administrative professional services with Environmental Planning and Design LLC in the amount not to exceed $300,000. Now therefore be resolved, Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, hereby direct the Director of Planning and Economic Development to sign and authorize all documents related to this agreement, and does hereby authorize and enter into an amended professional services agreement with Environmental Planning and Design LLC. Adopted and regularly made, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on April 6, 2022. Mr. Chairman here to speak upon that is our Director of Economic Development, Ms. Brenda Sackel.
Good morning, Commissioners and everyone. This resolution states that the county is amending a professional services agreement with environmental planning and design to provide consulting services with regard to Lackawanna County's recreation need and park assessment amenity upgrades. This amendment authorizes additional services for the stage-two scope of work related to the McDay Park Improvement Project. The initial agreement was the result of an RFP that was issued in July of 2021. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Brenda? No questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Other question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thanks, Brenda. All right, you're gonna be here a while, right? Approving, uh, resolution two-two-zero-one-one-one-zero-zero. Approving the Workforce Development Addendum, Development Addendum. Be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the Lackawanna County Workforce Development Board's addendum with Patstone Corporation providing intensive case manager, mentoring, career, and employment linkages and supportive services for young adults ages 18 to 24 who were incarcerated or subjected to the juvenile justice system from April 1, 2022 through June 30, 2022, due to a COVID-three-month grant extension from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Adopted and regularly made, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on April 6, 2022. Mr. Chairman, once again, here is Director Sackel.
This resolution states that the county on behalf of the Workforce Development Board is amending an agreement with Patstone Corporation to provide an additional $30,000 and extend the date of supportive services from April 1, 2022 to June 30, 2022. The original agreement allows for an amendment of such services.
Anyone have any questions for Brenda? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion. Second.
Other question? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Resolution two-two-zero-one-zero-one. Approving a CDB... Approving a CDBG modification. Be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna to hereby approve the submission of a modification of the following community development block grant programs to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, federal fiscal year twenty eighteen. The modification will transfer forty thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars out of the housing rehabilitation single-unit residential line item to create the public facilities line item for the Scott Township Building ADA restroom reconstruction project. Be it further resolved, that the county has complied with the terms of the Pennsylvania Act one-seventy-nine and has met all citizen participation requirements in connection with the above-mentioned revisions. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April sixth, twenty twenty-two. Mr. Chairman, once again, here is Director Sackel.
This resolution states that the county is submitting a CDBG modification request for full year eighteen on behalf of Scott Township to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development. This request will allow for Scott Township Building ADA restroom construction projects to be funded and commence the resolution as a requirement of the CDBG program, which ensures that there is citizen participation in the use of the funds. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Sackel? Undertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
And a question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Resolution two-two-zero-one-zero-two.
Entering into an engagement letter for audit services. Be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby award and entering to an engagement letter for audit services for the area agency on aging with our Betty McCall LLC for the year ended twenty thirty, I'm sorry, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, for a fee of sixteen thousand dollars. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April sixth, twenty twenty-two. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Director of the Area Agency on Aging, Mr. Jason Kavulich.
Good morning, everyone. We recently posted an RFP for a new provider for our audit. Because we're a recipient of federal funding, we do an audit annually. The only responsible bidder was the firm that we've asked to be approved today.
Anyone have any questions for Jason? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
And a question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Resolution two-two-zero-one-zero-three.
Approving the AAA amendments. Be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve contract amendments for the area agency on aging with the following: Allied and Home Services, Caregivers America LLC, Carrying Matters Home Home Care, Comprehensive Client Care Services Incorporated, Global Empire GHG Home Care, In-Home Care, In-Personal Care Services, Interim Healthcare Services Incorporated, and Valley Home Care. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April sixth, twenty twenty-two. Once again, here is Director Kavulich.
Prior to the pandemic, there was an estimated thirty-five thousand worker shortage in personal care. After the pandemic, it has become exasperated. And in order for us to remain competitive, we felt it was necessary to raise our rate for personal care providers. The providers that we have before you today have all been vetted through our C-screen process. They meet the minimal threshold, and they will qualify for rate increase. It will keep us more competitive with some of the federally funded programs, I'm sorry, waiver-funded programs and other private pay providers in the community.
In reality, they're still basically underpaid also.
They're tremendously underpaid, yes.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Anyone have any questions for Jason? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
A second.
And a question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Resolution two-two-zero-one-zero-four.
This is approving the AAA amendments with meals on wheels. Be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve contract amendments for the area agency on aging with meals on wheels to include meal rate increases as attached. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April sixth, twenty twenty-two. Once again, here is Director Kavulich.
I think it's no secret that inflation has impacted the food purchasing industry tremendously. Meals on Wheels provides, you know, home-delivered meals to our isolated individuals and individuals who can't regularly access food. So it serves an important nutritional need in the community. They have not asked us for this increase. We just feel it's the appropriate and responsible thing to do is to help them and continue to meet the needs of the community.
Under the circumstances, yeah, good idea. Anyone have any questions for Jason?
No.
Okay. Undertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
And a question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Two-two-zero-one-zero-five. You don't have it? Okay.
Can you give me a second?
This agreement is an extension.
There's probably one in the back. Yeah, just start.
Did you get it?
Yep. Approving the AAA Professional Services Agreement. Be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the fiscal year twenty-two through twenty-three area agency on aging professional services agreement with Lehigh Valley Health Network for COVID-nineteenth homebound vaccinations and the health and wellness senior activities. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April sixth, twenty twenty-two. Mr. Chairman, here is Mr. Kavulich.
These are two separate providers. There was a lag in Lehigh Valley's contract getting back to us for our homebound vaccination program because they had procured Delta Medics. So this is a carryover from a previous program that we approved. The second piece is two providers for our senior centers' activities for Tai Chi and yoga.
And this is all standard operating procedure to continue to vaccinate people and keep them busy. Okay. Anyone have any questions for Jason?
Nope.
Undertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
And a question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Resolution two-two-zero-one-zero-six.
Approving amendment in agreement with OYFS. Be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve amendment in agreement with the Office of Youth and Family Services and Northampton County Juvenile Justice Center for the fiscal year twenty-one through twenty-two to include specialized treatment program as attached. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April sixth, twenty twenty-two. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Director of Health and Human Services, Mr. William Browning.
Good morning, Commissioners. This will allow youth that are detained at the Northampton Detention Center to receive forensic evaluations as well as group treatment.
Thank you, sir. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Browning? Undertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
And a question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution two-two-zero-one-zero-seven.
Approving OYFS professional service agreements. Be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve professional service agreements for the Office of Youth and Family Services for the fiscal year twenty-one through twenty-two with Burke One for data storage and InfoMatrix Family Service Plan file implementation as attached. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April sixth, twenty twenty-two. Once again, Mr. Chairman, here is Director Browning.
This allows us, we have to store adoption records essentially for life, and the rate of data storage has gone up, but it will only affect us, I think, two dollars and seventy-eight cents a month for the county.
Anyone have any questions, Mr. Browning? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
And a question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution two-two-zero-one-zero-nine.
Entering an agreement of sale. Be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into agreement of sale with the Pentagon Federal Credit Union as successor by merger with the Valor Federal Credit Union located at three-one-five-three-three-one Franklin Avenue. The purchase price is five million dollars. Subject to terms and conditions of this agreement. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April sixth, twenty twenty-two. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Solicitor, Mr. Frank Rosario.
Thank you, Mr. Jeffers. As indicated, this is a sales agreement entered into between Lackawanna County and PennFed for the purchase of the subject property. It's a, the tenant of sales amount is five million dollars. There's a number of contingencies which are placed within the agreement. There's a forty-five-day initial contingency, which would allow either party to the contract to get out of the contract if they desire. There is a sixty-day environmental inspection contingency provision as well, whereby if there were any environmental concerns or issues after we did an inspection, we'd have the opportunity to get out of the agreement if we so chose. And then lastly, there is a financing contingency as the funds used to purchase the building are contingent upon our receipt of those from the state, and we have until July twenty-second of twenty twenty-two in order to obtain those funds or verification of those funds and advise PennFed as well. If we do not receive verification of the funds by that time, we're also able to get out of the contract. And under either of those scenarios, any deposit that the county would place or put down would be fully returned to the county at that time. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer those. If not, Mr. Browning, while he's there, can speak to the specifics of the building and the need for the building and the space, and primarily what the space will be used for. Mr. Browning?
Sure, this space, this would actually be one of the more critical steps in establishing a Department of Health. It gives us the space to integrate all of our functions within human services. It also provides clinic space to do initial assessments and screenings, as well as some of the regulatory requirements of the Department of Health. The significance of the screening, being able to have that and then easily locate a accessible space with parking, is that will offset some of the burdens of some of our local providers so they can actually provide medical care as opposed to going through the basic screening, blood pressure, all that stuff, and we do direct referrals. We believe it's going to have a huge impact on the community, not just Lackawanna County, but regionally. If we're able to start treating people more routinely, we could keep them out of the emergency rooms. We know from our data that most people in poverty receive a lot of the routine treatment in the emergency room, taking up the beds there for people that may need it, which is why you see people in hallways, et cetera. So we're hoping that with this accessible location, the space that's required, and also the building itself, it's one of the few in this Scranton area that's actually turnkey and provides us with the space that we need. Other buildings that we looked at in the area were about, you know, over a hundred years old when we're at and require a significant modification and do not have parking and are not as accessible to the people in need.
So this building, or this project, was kind of initiated, I think, by the governor's office, who's willing to pay for the entire building for us so that we can pursue the Department of Health. And I think, wasn't there only two counties in the state that were offered this as well?
Well, there are. The other county that actually just went live is Delaware. We are obviously partnering with the governor to secure those funds, and so that's an ongoing discussion with, and Brian may have a better handle on that.
We're filing for all grant money that's available, talking with the governor's office. This sale is contingent on us being able to get that grant.
Whether it's from the government or from the state or from other sources, it's not, it won't be a burden on Lackawanna County taxpayers. This is something that's been ongoing for a couple of years now, actually.
Correct.
And Mr. Browning, in order to go from step A to step B, to step D, you got to go to C. It's just the process that's involved and it's state-regulated, and it's something that Mr. Browning and his staff have been working on diligently, and we have too. It's something that hopefully works out well, and it looks like it's promising, and it is a great building. The parking is, you know, again, compared to where we're at, is really important. The accessibility to the downtown, to all of Lackawanna County, to the hospitals, to everything is just, it's a good opportunity. And, you know, if we can go forward with it, great, and we're obligated to at least try. And this is probably the fifth step on the process to get to the next one, and that's what we've been doing. Mr. Browning?
No, that's correct, and there are numerous steps involved. We have to be fully functional before we apply for reimbursement from the state, and that means securing all space, all staffing, all supplies, et cetera.
And that's not to necessarily, that does not mean that like the actual purchase of the building, but that to go forward with the funding to function, to work, that's what we have to do.
I think it's important to know, too, that once we get certified, we're up to eighty percent reimbursed on this.
Yes. And the community pays much more money as it stands now, sending them to the hospitals. Okay, anyone have any questions? Undertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
And a question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution two-two-zero-one-one-zero.
Requesting to the Workforce Development Board. Be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby appoint the following individual to the Workforce Development Board as a representative of higher education with a term to begin May first, twenty twenty-two, and continue through April thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Dr. Kathy Leonard, President and CEO of Johnson College. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April sixth, twenty twenty-two. Mr. Chairman.
Anyone have any questions? Undertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
And a question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opportunity for public to address the board. No one is here. Commissioners, other business.
Just thanks to Covington Township for providing our space today. This is just an awesome building. And just a reminder, too, since the newspaper is here, you know, we are still looking for an HR director, we're still looking for a CFO. So these are highly qualified positions, so anybody out there, we appreciate their resumes. And nine-one-one, we need dispatchers. It's a great career, it's an important career, and we have good benefits with the county, and it's a great place to work. So if there's anybody out there looking for a career in nine-one-one, we'd love to talk to you.
Did we fill the positions in the assessor's office? Are they open there?
Not at the time.
Not really, right now.
I think we filled all, I think we filled all three positions. I think there are people who are moving, wanting to be moving into the office positions. The director and the chief assessor, I think those positions are coming. They may have already been came in, I'm not really sure.
The HR position is, the application process is going to close on Friday, April twenty-second. I wanted to put another round of advertising in the Lackawanna County Jurists because it's a job. We're encouraging both lawyers and non-lawyers to apply, and the reason being, as to why I wanted to give people some more time, especially because the holidays are coming up, and I know people, you know, take some time off and stuff like that. But also, I don't think lawyers realize that, you know, as part of the HR, you do do a lot of, lawyers tend to lose their identity if they don't work as a lawyer. So there is very much a legal aspect to the HR position, which is due process hearings, ADA hearings, I'm missing one, due process ADA. What else? There's FMLA. But the point being is that, you know, you have until April twenty-second. After that, we're going to go through the resumes and start interviewing, but if, you know, please, if you're a lawyer or a non-lawyer and you're interested, it's a, you know, it's an important position. And then what was the other one? Oh, CFO. I mean, I don't know when the closing date is on that. Do we have one? Do we have one?
I think it's the same application.
Around the same time. Yeah, we have received some good applications, so the closing dates around that, too. We just have to get these positions filled, so we really can't, you know, keep them lingering.
Thank you, and thank Covington Township, and thank everyone for coming today, and I'll entertain a motion.
Did you opportunity to address the one? I missed that.
You missed that.